Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 12, 2007. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for next meeting, please?
Councilmember Gillette.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Erwin.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Do we have any requests for continuance of any public hearing items or agenda items or any special announcements? All right, hearing done. I do have one special announcement. It's always our pleasure to recognize good things that happened within the City of Thousand Oaks family. And tonight, we want to recognize Candace Hong, our Finance Director. Candy is the proud grandmother of, I believe it was a baby girl? Baby boy? Mark. And, but more importantly, or just as importantly, it represents five generations of Candy's family. And so, we want to recognize and congratulate her and her family.[157.12][157.12](Applause) And they all live in Thousand Oaks. So, it's very appropriate. Five generations, something to be very proud of. Candy, congratulations again to you and your family. With that, we'll move to Item 5. That's Special Presentations. We have one this evening, and so, if you give me a moment, I'll make my way to the podium. Our one special presentation this evening is to recognize the Cano Open Space Essay Contest. And so, at this time, I'd like to invite Elizabeth Brown to join me at the podium. Tonight, we're recognizing five winners who are going to be, each received some recognition and certificate this evening. All five winners participated in the Cano Open Space Trails Advisory Committee Essay Contest. It's a contest that we have every year, and it involves our school children who go out and visit our open space and trail system through COSTAC, sponsored by COSTAC. City of Thousand Oaks Park District helped pay for this event. They have the event every year, and the kids get together and they write essays. They're outstanding essays. I've had the honor of actually being a grader in years past. It's a lot of work for those who read the essays and grade them. But I want to turn it over to Ms. Brown, so she can tell you a little bit more about the contest and introduce our winners. Elizabeth?
Thank you very much, Mayor Fox. The Cano Open Space Trails Advisory Committee, along with the Cano Open Space Foundation, has been sponsoring the Trails Education Days for 16 years. This is our 16th year. And in those years, every fifth grader in the Cano School District participates. And this year, we had over 1,600 fifth graders take part from all 20 elementary schools here in the Cano. And I want to just take this moment to express our sincere appreciation and support for the City of Thousand Oaks, CRPD, COSCA, the School District, and the Cano Open Space Foundation, as well as the over 100 volunteers and staff that make this possible every year. Joining me tonight in the audience, and hopefully with the presentation, is Julia Osborne, the President of the Cano Open Space Foundation, as well as Elaine Hagan, who is Vice President of that foundation, as well as the mother of Trails Education Days. So, we're really pleased to have them tonight. We had 800 essays that were received this year, and we did have a lot of people reading those. And we are so pleased to be able to tell you that we have our five grand prize winners tonight. In addition to these young people, unfortunately, only three of the five are here. Every school that participated in the event had two winners at that school. So, every school had two winners. But tonight, you have our grand prize winners, and I believe their essays are in your packet. So, at this time, we'd like to call up our winners to receive something from Mayor Fox. We'll start with Savannah Sykes from Sycamore Canyon.[363.06][363.06](Applause) Our next winner is Vivian Hu from Westlake Hills Elementary School.[377.56][377.56](Applause) And our final winner who is here with us tonight is Jed McQuigan from Wildwood Elementary
I do want to just take a moment, and I don't want to embarrass her, but Elaine has been involved with this program from the very beginning. And many years ago, some of us got together and thought what a great idea would be to have the kids write essays and then, and then receive recognition at the City Council meeting. And I think it's safe to say that folks like Elaine and others, if it were not for their efforts, their volunteer efforts, our whole open space program, COSTAC, and all these great things that we do, certainly wouldn't be what it is today. So, Elaine, thanks for all your effort. We appreciate that.[458.84][458.84](Applause) Are we going to get these to the other kids? Okay. Great. We'll give our families a moment to make their way out. You can always stay if you like for a riveting City Council meeting. Good call. Good call. All right, that moves us to Item 6, Public Comment. Madam Clerk, could you call a public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to Council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the City Manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Five people have presented cards and presented Council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. We have five comment cards. We'll start with the Director of our Libraries, Steve Brogdon. After Mr. Brogdon, it'll be Don Williams, and that will be followed by James Gustafson. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, Councilmembers. It's indeed a pleasure tonight to introduce to you two Division Managers, two new Division Managers for the library. I think most people are aware that the library is very simply described as having two parts. One's the public side, and the other's the technical side. And because of retirements, we had a rare situation where both of those were vacant, one of them for almost a year. So, believe me, we're delighted to be able to introduce our two new Division Managers to you. On my far right is Nancy Schramm. Nancy was, we hired her away from Los Angeles County Public Library. I met her when she was a manager of the Westlake Village Library. And from there, she was transferred to the Canyon Country Library, and we couldn't be pleased with her joining our team. I knew it would be a good hire when I called her at the Canyon Country Library. She didn't know it was me on the phone. She put me on hold, but it was done so very nicely and almost apologetically when she came back to pick up the call, that I felt this is a person who knows customer service. So, that was, that was a good sign. So, Nancy Schramm, Division Manager for Public Services. And then, immediately to my right is Chris Hendel. Chris is a homegrown librarian, you might say. And I'm very proud of Chris for, for many reasons, but she truly started at the, at the very entry level. She started as a volunteer many, many years ago. She was then hired as a part-time library aide, was promoted to Senior Library Assistant, took advantage of the city's tuition reimbursement program, went back to school, got her Master's in Library Science, was a librarian, a supervisor, and now a Division Manager. And I couldn't be prouder of both of them. So, Nancy Schramm and Chris Hendel.
All right.[710.12][710.12](Applause) Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to say hello and how much I'm looking forward to this opportunity to working in the City of Thousand Oaks to provide library services to this community. And I'm looking forward to working with this fantastic staff at the Thousand Oaks Library and also with the City Council and city staff. So, thank you.
All right. Congratulations and welcome.
Well, also, I want to say my thanks to the Council for your continued support of the Tuition Reimbursement Program. It was very important to my life in helping, give me the opportunity to do the things that I really wanted to do. I think there are others in the city who are taking advantage of the program, and it's, it's very generous, and it's, it's made a huge difference in my life. I feel, I feel, I feel honored to continue to work for the library. And I also want to say thank you to Nancy and Steve. They have been my mentors all these years, and they, they helped make me what I am today. I look forward to working with Nancy more and, and with you as well. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations to both of you. Don Williams, followed by James Gustafson and Janet Wall. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I'd like to read my comments, if you don't mind. "Incredulous is how I felt after reading a June 7 article in the Thousand Oaks Acorn stating that our city's revenues and expenditures have come to a collision point as a result of our city spending more than its taking in. So, what recommendations were stated that you have come up with to address this problem? A community study sessions and bringing in financial experts to participate in the sessions is one recommendation. And I don't understand why are sessions and experts needed to address the simple problem of overspending? You are overspending. You need to stop it, period." A second recommendation listed was to use $40 million in reserve funds with no plans on how to replace this money. "I have run a homeowners association here in the city, and while it's only comprised of 91 homes, the principles of government governing and HOA in a city are pretty similar. So, I do know a little bit about something about reserve funding and planning. We do this by sticking with our budget, by adequate planning and funding of our reserve fund, and by not treating our reserve fund as a financial cushion to fall back on to compensate for overspending. Now, I've noticed you have 249 pages worth of capital improvement programs in your proposed budget. How are you planning on paying for all these if you take $40 million from the reserve fund? Now, in September of '06, the California Assembly Bill 2100, the Reserves Funding Bill, was signed into law to ensure homeowners associations have sufficiently funded reserves. Maybe the state legislature needs to enact a similar law directed at city governments." Another recommendation I read was to raise our water fees. What I'd like to know is, why should I? Why should the people in this room? And why should the citizens of the city pay for your financial inadequacies? You spend too much, you fix the problem. Do not expect us to agree to pay more in water fees to compensate for your overspending. The only recommendation which made any sense that I read about was from Councilwoman Claudia De La Peña, who suggested the methods to run the city more efficiently might be found through greater use of audits. Now, I'm pretty sure that some of you may shy away from her idea, is finding, one finding most likely to come out of an audit would be the elimination of a day labor site, an issue that's very passionate with me. If you guys recognize my name, you know that. "A site where the vast majority of Thousand Oaks citizens solidly object to having taxpayer resources, including city property and city funds used to operate it. Now, for the past two and a half years, I've corresponded with you requesting this site be shut down and our tax dollars be spent more relevant programs, such as our police and fire departments, as an example. I've shared that I no longer feel safe in that part of the neighborhood due to a few experiences I encounter as a result of this site. Nothing's been done. However, the only action you did take since the beginning of, actually, 2005, was to almost double the amount of tax money spent annually to operate your site, from $59,000 to about $100,000."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. James Gustafson, Janet Wall, followed by Ron Siegel. Good evening, sir.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Madam City Attorney and City Manager, Mitnick. My name is Jim Gustafson. I live in Thousand Oaks in the Signature Collection across the street from the Lang Ranch Park site. And I rise to speak to you tonight in opposition to the city's proposed allocation of $5 million for budget item, I think it's MI 2048, page 184, the capital improvement budget. I have a letter that I'd like to submit as well. Here's my point. The site, I don't think there's any question, is designated in the city's specific plan in the 1986 stipulated judgment between, in the Lang Ranch versus City of Thousand Oaks lawsuit, and in the Cano Park District Master Plan as a community park site. And that's what we want there. We want a community park site. The problem is that the CRPD is not building a community park site. What it's building is a playfield. The definition of a community park comes directly out of the CRPD master plan. "Community park is a leisure facility specifically designed to serve the broader recreational needs of several neighborhoods. The nature of this type of facility encourages and attracts family units on a day-to-day basis, as well as major events, so forth and so on. A playfield has a separate designation, playfield definition. A playfield is typically a separate facility of 10 to 20 acres oriented to day-night athletic uses. Football, soccer, baseball, tennis, courts, basketball, and other competitive team sports are generally the major uses accommodated. CRPD either has entered into or intends to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Thousand Oaks Little League, for the Thousand Oaks Little League to have exclusive use of the eight ball fields that are to be constructed in Phase 1 of the proposed project." Phase 1 says in the EIR that was circulated a few weeks ago that that's the only phase that they have funding for. And California law, SEQA, requires that if you're going to build a project in phases, you have to identify the source of funding for the subsequent phases and the time when those phases will be built. It doesn't do that. The problem is, we're going to be left with a graded site and eight ball fields exclusively for the use of 700 members of the Little League. The community has absolutely no ability to use the park. And my point is that I don't believe the city should be taking $5 million from, according to what the woman before me said, its already strapped budget, and then taking 20 acres of public land and basically giving $5 million and 20 acres of land to 700 members of the Little League. What we would ask is that the Council, at the very least, wait until the EIR has been certified, the SEQA process has been exhausted. I have a pending lawsuit myself right now in federal court in front of Audrey Collins against the CRPD, asking for a declaration to declare that it's inconsistent with the city zoning.
Sir, thanks. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to, if I could, I have copies for everyone, including the City Managers.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Janet Wall, followed by Ron Siegel. And our last speaker card is Jim Friedel.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, and City Councilmembers and Mr. Mitnick. I'm here tonight to call attention to a safety issue. The city has let go for too long. I'm referring to the hillside area above the Kmart and Village Homes in Westlake Village. An EIR was done for this project in January of 1989. A supplemental MND was done in 1999. The remedial measures for the original EIR refer to this hillside, which is currently a landslide area. It says, "The impact of the landslide in area, through the lots that they're referring to, can be mitigated by removal of landslide and replacement as engineered fill or a combination of shear key and buttresses." It goes on to say in the other area that there is a need to remove all slide debris. This project has been ongoing for the last eight years. However, after rains in January of 2005, the hillside referred to in the EIR did in fact start to slide. The entire hillside was covered in plastic sheeting, and two and a half years later, it's still there. In January of this year, we had a fire that burned that hillside, as well as many other acres above the former Kmart. I brought photographs to show the current state of the plastic sheeting. I've questioned staff many times on this matter. Ed Ridke is the planner, and I received no response. No answers whatsoever. The builder is still on site. There is, in a COSCA condition, a notation by Mr. Mark Towne. The memo is dated December 22, 1993. He says, "I am concerned about long-term liability exposure for COSCA from this remedial grading. Because the extent of the landslide is not known at this time, I am recommending that the city negotiate a written statement at this time from the owner that he is willing to enter into a lot line adjustment to include the affected area as part of HOA Lot 36." I'm not sure what the status is on this matter, but it is very possible that we'll have heavy rains in winter of this year. I think the city needs to look into the matter and get it fixed now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ron Siegel and Jim Friedel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Ron Siegel. I'm a 33-year resident of Westlake Village. I'm here to speak in opposition to the $5 million budget for the Lang Ranch Park. And I do so not because I'm an old Fuddy, but because I have some, some concerns. I have been involved with youth as a volunteer and professionally for over 30 years in this community. I will match anyone in this room or in this community, hour for hour or dollar for dollar, for their volunteer and money commitment towards, towards youth, sports, and athletics. I volunteered my office and my time for free clinics, for coaching, giving supplies to the schools for their athletics. So, I love sports. I love athletics for kids, and I'm all for it. I'm also, I was also involved on the committee, the focus group, for the Lang Ranch Park. Because the park is in our neighborhood, I thought it was important to become involved in it. And as a member of the focus group, there were some issues that I wasn't particularly fond of. I thought that the scope of the park was larger than it should be, but it was for the overall community, I thought it would, it would work. However, when I went to the Parks Department, one of the commissioners, in an unbelievable abuse of, of power, unilaterally added on to this park in a way that it makes it more of a city park or a giant sports complex and not a community park that was designed for the local community. We are now having, and we have had dialogue with Little League. We want Little League to have participation, but not to the extent that it's, it's planned. That dialogue has taken, it's been official and unofficial, but we want to work with Little League, and I think they want to work with us, to make this a community project that we all in the community can work together and make happen for the benefit, basically, of the kids, of the, of the youth of, of our community. So, I'm asking you to please put this budget item in advance for the time, for the time being. There are issues, there are safety issues, there's EIR issues that need to be looked at, and we want to have an appropriate park for the appropriate reasons in the appropriate place. And I think, as a community, we can all be reasonable and make this thing happen for the benefit of all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Jim Friedel. Jim is the General Manager of Cano Recreation Park District. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, members of Council. I came down tonight because of the budget item involving Lang Ranch Park to express my sincere appreciation for the Council for putting that money into its budget. And currently, we are going through an EIR process. I want to have, want you to have the latest information. We have had our draft EIR hearing and have had the written comments submitted. The comment period ended on June 4. We have a consultant that is helping us put together the responses to those comments, approximately 100 pages worth of comments, and we're providing responses to those. So, that EIR process is ongoing, and I think the, the net result of that, with continued neighborhood participation, I think will, at least historically in this town, is yield projects that the public can use and be proud of. So, I believe that the process itself will, will carry, carry the day and yield the project that, that the community can be proud of. With respect to keeping those funds committed to the budget, I think it's a great investment for the city. We won't ask for or call upon those funds unless we do have a park to build. We need an approved environmental document. We need to come to the city and get a development permit. We'll need to have architectural and engineering plans drawn up, and we probably are at least a year away from spending any real significant construction dollars on the park, should it be approved. So, in terms of setting aside that money, the city certainly will, will have other opportunities to consider it, but keeping it in the budget certainly gives us something to strive for. Our board has yet to have the conversation and exactly where we'll get the money, but we are committed to matching those funds and trying to raise the others to probably build the single largest community park in its first phase that we've done with any community park in town. And I think going around our community and looking at our community parks, I, I view them as a great asset to the community. So, we'll continue to work with our neighbors and hopefully change their perspective on, on this particular park. Couple other just quick hits. Touch a Truck is this Saturday at Thousand Oaks Community Center, and I mention that because it's a great family event. If you have any kids under seven years old, take them there. It's great. Helicopters, trucks, fire trucks, dump trucks, they have a great time. And one last item, I do want to compliment your staff and the Planning Commission for spending about four hours last night discussing the CLU pool. They did approve it in a 5-0 vote, and we're committed to working with CLU and the community in making that pool project a great asset for the community as well, and you're a partner in that. So, thanks for that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Friedel. That concludes our cards for public comment. Ms. Erwin?
Mr. Friedel? Can you just remind us again what is included in Phase 1 of the Lang Ranch Park?
Well, right now, we don't have an engineer's estimate, cost estimate. We are relying on a kind of a rule of thumb park construction cost of $500,000 an acre. It's about a 50-acre site, so we're, we're using a ballpark figure of $25 million for the total construction. We think we can raise between $10 and $15 million for the first phase, thanks in large part to the $5 million in your budget. With the first phase, we'd like to, we'll rely on an engineer's estimate to decide how far we can go with that money in the first phase. It is a site that is hilly, and there will be a lot of grading costs, upfront grading costs and infrastructure costs to get the, the site ready for development. But it is also tiered, and so, it's not leveling the entire But it is also tiered, and so it's not leveling the entire hillside, it's actually tiering the project on the hill, much like the tiers exist now. So, I can't tell you exactly how much we'll get to with Phase 1. We have committed that the infrastructure, the parking, and the ball fields would be part of that. We're really hoping that with the dollars we raise, we'll be able to go beyond that. But we won't know that until we have an engineer's estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedel. All right, that does complete our public comment cards. Item 7, we're going to hold that until after, that's the City Council Redevelopment Agency... Oh, okay, item 7 is our public hearings. Okay, so, okay, we moved that around on the agenda a little bit. All right, so, let me go to the clerk, and she can open the hearing for item 7A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 7A, the proposed fiscal year 2007, 2008, and fiscal year 2008 and 2009, City and Redevelopment Agency and Capital Improvement Program budgets. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. And I have one public hearing card, and that person shall be allowed five minutes.
All right, we have a number of reports from staff this evening on this issue, and to lead things off, let me turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Mittnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, staff has the pleasure to present to you the proposed budget for fiscal years '07, '08, and '08, '09, operating and capital for the City Redevelopment Agency and all the applicable funds that are related to that. By way of overview and background, I'll give some introductory overview comments, and then we'll turn it over to John Adams, our Deputy Finance Director, and Brent Cicada, our Budget Officer, and they'll go into more detail. We'll try our best not to repeat what has already been presented to council previously. I do want to acknowledge and thank all of the staff from all the departments, not just finance, but all the different departments, and all the department heads and their key division heads are here tonight, and they are available to answer questions as they come up. And in particular, I'd like to embarrass Ellen Rosa from the Finance Department for her hard work in putting together the document. She's one of those folks in the background that doesn't get enough attention or recognition, so I'm going to do that to embarrass her a little bit. By way of some introductory comments, with respect to some of the comments we heard here tonight, I just want to make it very clear to the council that, before I do that, let me give you a little bit of background. This process has been one year in the making, and we do a two-year budget cycle, which is two one-year budgets. We've had a number of study sessions in front of council. Council will recall going back to April, when you had the study session and public hearing on the user fees. On April 24th, you had a study session on the Capital Improvement Program. On May 14th, you had, oh, on May 14th, the Planning Commission reviewed the Capital Improvement Program for consistency with the general plan, and there was a 5-0 vote on that. And on May 29th, there was a study session on the operating budget. So we've gone through all those hoops, and we are in full compliance with state law with respect to our timing and all the applicable issues. There is a copy of the operating budget document, Green Book, available on the table there for members of the public, and for those at home that would like to watch it, you can get it on the city's web, or you can come into City Hall or the library, and we'll gladly provide you with a copy of that. Also, the proposed Capital Improvement Program budget for the next two years, actually for the next five years, with the funding for the next two years included. The user fee manual, if you want to know all the different fees, charges, and taxes that the city has, it's in this book. The budget spending plan for the year that comes up, but we also have the annual comprehensive financial, comprehensive annual financial report, which shows how the money was spent for the year before, and it does go through a very involved audit by an outside firm. So we have that. Okay, by way of background, with respect to the fiscal health of the city, to make it crystal clear, the city is in outstanding financial condition. We're not experiencing hard times, we're not having cash flow problems. We did have a challenge in balancing the budget with respect to recurring revenues, to cover recurring appropriations, and we did rise to that challenge, and we did that by cutting some positions, but we also put in money for two new positions in the police department, an additional school resource officer and an additional detective position. So we found, we made that happen. There was some talk about reserves. Yes, we are using reserves in the general fund. No, we're not using them to balance the budget, we're not using reserves for operating purposes. We're doing what is a very common practice in both the private sector and the public sector, we're using one-time reserves for one-time capital projects, and that's in full compliance with council's fiscal policies, and our finance team will go over some of those fiscal policies. Also, by way of reserves, of the 478 cities in the state, we're probably in the upper 5%, the top 20 cities in terms of the aggregate amount of reserves. We were at 100% of the total general fund budget at one point in time. So we're going down a little bit, but that's what the council's obligated to do. When you have reserves for capital projects, there comes a time when you need to spend them on those projects. And also, we do not have new development anymore paying for new capital projects. So as projects, buildings and facilities age, and they have to be upgraded and replaced, we don't have developers stepping up to do that anymore, it's up to the City Council to do that. There was talk about the Lang Ranch Community Park, the $5 million budget appropriation. Staff stands firmly behind that recommendation, but as Mr. Field pointed out, the money would be appropriated, but it would be a long time before it's spent, and City Council will have an opportunity to weigh in on that as the project comes forward. So that's it, by way of introductory comments, and now I'll turn it over to John Adams, Deputy Finance Director.
Good evening. I'm actually going to turn it over to our Budget Officer, Brent, who will do the intro, the overview, and the citywide summary, and he'll turn it back over to me for the capital project budget and the general fund reserves.
Good evening. Before I start, I'd like to bring the City Council's attention, three items, two of which are included in the supplemental package. One item is the Capital Improvement Program, summary in the appendix of the operating budget, which is from the budget study session. There's no effect on the operating budget. The reconciliation between the study session version and the Capital Improvement Program budget brought to the public hearing tonight is located in the staff report on pages 7 and 8. The second item is a memo from finance, providing further clarification on questions asked by City Council after the previous study session. And the third item, which was just handed to you, is a revised Redevelopment Agency resolution, which includes a Section 2 related to the low-mod housing fund. And with that being said, I'd like to get started with total appropriations for both the operating and capital improvements projects for all City and Redevelopment Agency funds, which is $212,912,000 and $193,602,000 for fiscal year 2007, 2008, and fiscal year 2008, 2009, respectively. The budgets for both fiscal years are balanced with estimated revenues and reserves sufficient to cover all appropriations. The use of reserves for one-time appropriations is in full compliance with City Council policies as outlined in the operating budget starting at page 349. Fiscal year 2007, 2008 appropriations, as stated earlier, is $212,912,000, and this graph just shows how the revenues and appropriations balance. The following graph shows the breakdown of the citywide appropriations by fund. General Fund makes up 42% of the total, and the six enterprise funds make up approximately 26%. The other funds make up the remaining 32%. This is the same information for fiscal year 2008, 2009, as shown a couple slides ago, where the appropriations as stated earlier is $193,602,000. And again, this graph shows fiscal year 2008, 2009 appropriations. The four largest funds, the General Fund, the Water Fund, Wastewater, and the Redevelopment Agency, which are on the right-hand side, make up 76% of the total appropriations for the city. The next graph shows the General Fund activity for fiscal year 2007, 2008 of $86,965,000, and as you can see, the capital projects are covered by the reserves. And for fiscal year 2008, 2009, General Fund appropriation totals $84,156,000. The next graph of revenues of the General Fund, which shows that taxes and fees makes up 63% of the total revenues. $29 million of the 46, or 44.6 million, or 65%, is sales tax revenue. The next General Fund expenditure graph shows that Sari and Fringe Benefits makes up 40%. And of the $41.8 million of maintenance and operating expenditures, $25.5 million, or 61%, is related to public safety. Now we're briefly going to touch on some of the issues that were brought up at the May 29th study session, which are the Financial Strategic Plan, library staffing, law enforcement staffing, storm water and flood control, and the water and wastewater funds. As for the Financial Strategic Plan, this is one of the most critical elements brought up during the study session to assist the city in planning for its future. Staff will be updating the Financial Strategic Plan in the upcoming fiscal year and work with council to make sure that we get a better understanding of our local economy and identify future revenue challenges as well as opportunities as we transition from a growth to a maintenance city. As for library staffing, as discussed during this study session, library hourly employee budgets have increased to meet the new demands, one being the new children's library. But the library director did state that with the current two-year budget, there'll be no additional staffing required during this time. Law enforcement staffing is basically related to the school resource officer, and to offset those costs, the city's current agreement with the school district is that they'll pick up the city's share of the youth outreach program, which is approximately $75,000. The community prosecution program will be coming to City Council for approval on the continuation of that program on June 26th. The Storm Water Flood Control Fund, basically there's going to be more reliance placed on the General Fund with the appropriation of $175,000 for each of the upcoming two fiscal years. The estimated amount of future costs for water compliance monitoring and implementation of water quality control measures could be substantial and affect the General Fund and its various programs in future years. As for the Water Fund, the budget process operating in capital budgets is the first step in the calculation of the water and wastewater rates. Once approved, Public Works will continue to work with their consultant to update their financial plan and determine its effect on future rates. Rate proposals will be brought back to City Council in the later part of June or early July, and will be effective by no later than December of 2007. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to John Adams, who'll discuss the Capital Improvements Budget and the General Fund Reserves.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I will finish the last part of the staff presentation with an overview of the Capital Improvement Budget and a brief discussion on General Fund Reserves. As noted earlier, the City Council held a public study session on the capital budget on April 24th. The current proposed budget includes 141 projects with a total appropriation of $83.6 million. Since the study session, staff has made several changes. These changes are outlined on page 7 of the City Council Agenda Packet. As briefly noted earlier, the most significant changes were in the Water Fund. This is just a breakout to show capital projects for 2007, 2008, and this is to show the breakout on 2008, 2009. During the study session on April 24th, City Council requested information on five specific projects. Staff specifically addresses each project in the staff report in your Agenda Packet and attached our various exhibits, starting on page 9. I'll provide a brief summary of each of the projects at the end of the presentation. Project staff will be available for any additional questions. First, let me start with the Timber School Historic Project. It's outlined in Exhibit 1, starting on page 9. To recap, the City Council previously allocated $1 million in the prior two-year budget cycle. This project was funded from the Newberry Park redevelopment project area. Staff is recommending carrying over the full amount for fiscal year '07, '08. Next, the Civic Arts Plaza projects are outlined in Exhibit 2, starting on page 15. There are three significant projects outlined in the proposed capital budget. Phase 3, which is being carried over, originally was budgeted for $5 million and is in current, and currently is in progress. The estimated completion date is April of 2008. The second project is the Cap Entry Plaza with a proposed budget of $3.8 million. And the final project is the Cap Parking Structure Improvements with a proposed budget of $2 million. The second and third projects will not occur until ongoing improvements in Phase 3 are complete. The two projects, Project 2 and 3, will be brought back to City Council once the Capital Ad hoc Committee has approved the concepts. And I'm going to show you a couple pictures. For those that may have seen these before, these are pictures of the entryway at the theater from the garage, and the second picture is from the theater opening at the City Hall entrance, looking back to the parking garage. All right, briefly, the Auto Mall project was brought to City Council on May 15th. Based on City Council direction, staff is working with the auto mall representatives to develop a project that will be brought back to City Council in the near future. Potential funding for this project is from the T.O. Boulevard redevelopment project area. Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, for the proposed capital budget, staff is recommending improvements to Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, specifically the access road from Santa Rosa to the plant. This is further outlined in Exhibit 4 on page 21. Consideration for a memorandum of agreement with the County of Ventura will be brought back to the City Council in July. Not that this picture's that great, but it does show the plant with the road and the Okay, next, and finally, Phase 2 of the Kelly Road Storm Drain is proposed in the capital budget. This project is proposed to be funded mainly by the Newberry Road project area, with support from the General Fund of $840,000. Exhibit 5 on page 22 provides more detail. Okay, in order to fund capital projects, the city has traditionally used reserves. Next, I plan to briefly discuss General Fund reserves, which will be used during the next budget cycle. With General Fund, the city maintains reserves for several things, including capital projects, emergencies, encumbrances, contingencies, endowments, and compensated absences. The budget policy has been to use undesignated fund balance or reserves to fund one-time uses, usually for capital projects or large capital grants. An example would be the CLU project with CRPD. With the approval of the proposed operating capital budget, undesignated fund balance is estimated at $330,000. Okay, as mentioned earlier, the use of reserves is in full compliance with the fiscal policies as outlined in the operating budget, starting on page 337. There are three components of fund balance or reserves. The first component is called reserve for fund, or reserves for fund balance. These include encumbrances, loans, and inventories. The second component is considered designated fund balance. Designated fund balance includes the 15% working capital, the 5% for emergencies, and various endowments. The final category, which is important here, is the undesignated fund balance. These reserves are used for capital improvement projects and other one-time expenditures. Use of these reserves is subject to the budget process. This graph is to demonstrate 10-year trend information for fund balance for the General Fund. This is the complete fund balance, which includes reserves, undesignated fund balance, and designated fund balance. As you can tell, city started building up reserves for the, in 1999, and it peaked in 2003, 2004, and based on the current budget, where we're using 22.7 million of undesignated reserves, our reserve and designated fund balance will be 37.5 million. So we started with our estimate for 2006, 2007 at 60.2 million in fund balance. City Council, based on this budget, would be allocating 22.7 million of undesignated fund balance to capital projects, which would leave the city with 37.5 million in reserves or designations for fund balance. This shows a five-year trend of fund balance. It's broken up into the three components we discussed earlier. The first component, which is the first smaller component, is approximately 6 million, and this is the reserves, or what we call reserved fund balance, specifically for encumbrances, loans, and other receivables. The second component, which is undesignated fund balance, is set by council policy. The second component, which is undesignated fund balance, is set by council policy. These include the fifteen percent working capital, five percent emergencies. In two thousand and five, two thousand and six, which was last fiscal year, it was sixteen million higher, and this was based on the OPEB reservation or the designation for other post-retirement benefits. Since we have spent six million this year, or four point eight out of the general fund, it freed up money for capital projects in oh-six, oh-seven, oh-seven, oh-eight, and oh-eight, oh-nine. The second component, which is the green component, is the undesignated fund balance. This is money that is not designated for any other purpose and is traditionally used for capital projects. This graph, or this slide, we actually showed at the prior presentation. This shows the designated fund balance, which, if you remember in the prior slide, is the largest portion of fund balance. For oh-six, oh-seven, undesignated fund balance will be thirty-one point five million, and this is part of the reserves. For fiscal year oh-seven, oh-eight, the beginning fund balance that's available and undesignated fund balance is twenty-three million, with a total of thirteen point seven million in capital projects. The ending designated fund balance, undesignated fund balance, will be nine point three million. And next, for fiscal year oh-nine, oh-nine, the beginning balance would be nine point three, with capital projects of nine million. The city's general fund undesignated fund balance would be approximately three hundred thousand. This does take into account that, remember, that we have thirty-seven point five million for designated and reserve fund balance. With staff's recommendation, that concludes our presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Good report. You guys got through it very well. Questions from council? Ms. Bill DeLaPino.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much for giving a detailed illustration and helping us understand how the budget works. It's helpful, not only for council members, but for the public as well, of course. In February, when we had our study session, we discussed revenues, and it was stated at that meeting that incorporated into our revenues is any proceeds that we may receive from the proposed Home Depot on Hampshire. Is that still the case?
In the supplemental green packet, we did address the question, but in projecting revenue for sales tax, we do not anticipate unplanned or unentitled development in projecting sales tax. For oh-seven, oh-eight, we are projecting a one and a half percent increase to sales tax, and in the second year, we're anticipating recovery to sales tax of two point five percent, based on the Oaks Mall coming online, which is a planned development with proposed openings in the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine fiscal year.
And when did this change occur, from the statement made in February to tonight?
I don't... The thing is, is that we're, when we're looking, projecting, we're talking to our sales tax consultant and looking at what our entitled developments are, and Home Depot is not entitled development. And so, you know, this is not a science, it's more of an art, trying to look at what we think that's going to happen to, with a crystal ball looking into the future. And clearly, Home Depot isn't in the sights during this next two-year timeframe, so it would make no sense to include them at this point. So, I'm not sure how the statement said, but we really are looking at the Oaks Mall as the major increase to our revenue in this next two-year period.
Thank you. The auto mall has had a slump in sales, a rather dramatic slump in sales. What is being forecast regarding that? And is, will it continue to go down? Will it remain at the level it is now? Was that incorporated into this budget?
Again, our sales tax consultant mentioned that two years ago, there was a significant amount of incentives given to the dealers, to people buying cars. And so, there was a big spike in purchases of cars. So when you compare that to what's happening now, we see a decline in comparison. I think we're really asking, we're estimating it to remain stable at this point, which is probably a conservative estimate.
And what are one-time uses for the reserves? Can you give us an example?
Oh, other one-time uses, you can see them in the budget. For example, using Lang Ranch, a many, five million dollars for Lang Ranch Park. The one-time uses are for the Civic Arts Plaza here, all the enhancements that we have projected here. If you look in the general fund budget under facilities, all those facility projects are all one-time uses.
Does that mean that in ten years from now, when the Civic Arts Plaza needs a paint job, that it cannot be used anymore from the general fund?
Well, that's what we're going to be addressing when we look at our financial strategic plan this fall and bringing this back to council. Certainly, we are, we still have some reserves set aside for facilities enhancements. We have a five million dollars, you can see that in the schedule that John just showed you. And hopefully, that we are building up reserves over time, even though we're projecting things to be flat now, the council has to look at this in the fall, and when we bring this back to you, we'll be talking about what does our long-term prognosis, our future look like in terms of revenue generations compared to expenditures, and are we going to continue to build a significant, enough fund balance to handle these one-time things that occur, including our deferred maintenance or maintenance of our facilities?
Did staff do a scenario of just a flat sales tax income for the city of Thousand Oaks?
We worked with the percentage that we thought was appropriate, and with, like John mentioned, it was one and a half percent the first year and two percent the second. So, clearly, we'd be having to lop off what?
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, four hundred thousand if it was flat, so...
Yeah, right now, flat for this fiscal year would be twenty-eight point six million, and we're only anticipating twenty-nine for oh-seven, oh-eight, which is very conservative at this point. But it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase, or increase based on what we project this fiscal year to end out.
And where are we reconciling the actual budget? Is that being done periodically?
Or sales tax? Are we talking sales tax?
Everything.
Are we showing the whole budget reconciled? Let me turn to the right page for you. Okay, if we're talking about the general fund summary, that's on page fifteen of the operating budget. And if, I don't know if you want me to walk through that with you, but is that what you were asking, or did you want to see where we reconcile?
How often do we reconcile the actuals?
Well, actually, we get monthly reports, and that's why we're watching our budget, want to make sure expenditures stay within target and our revenues stay within target. And we bring back, did you want to answer that, Scott? I see you looking at me, but...
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reconciliations happen every month. We provide a very detailed monthly report to the council, and it's twenty pages or so, and very user-friendly charts and tables on the revenues and the expenditure side. So we do provide that accountability, and outside firms also audit the records. I should point out, the finance department is extremely conservative in their revenue estimates. In our office, we often struggle with them because we want them to be a little bit more generous, because the reality is, we typically will get more revenues than they project. And that's a good thing, and we're always within the industry standard of four percent, almost always within it, so... And also, keep in mind that the appropriations, we don't spend a hundred percent of what's appropriated typically, so there will be that little bit of cushion, and every year that goes into the reserves for capital projects. The revenue estimates tend to come in more. We're being very conservative because we are in a transition period here in Thousand Oaks, shifting to a maintenance economy, and the Oaks Mall renovation is impacting revenues, and the auto mall is a little bit flat, but the foreign dealers are doing much better.
And the other question I had was, one of the recommendations by the budget task force, of course, was to give the internal auditor more independence, for example. Also, the benchmarks for city services, where are we with that?
That's, that's what you see, we'll address the benchmarks first. That's what you see in the budget document, is each department has come up with their goals and objectives and how their goals will be measured. And the benchmarking will be a comparison that will be done, you know, down the road after we've seen some results. So that's kind of the plan for the budget document now, and we'll be presenting that. Scott's planning on doing an update next year with that. In terms of the internal auditor, he has been doing internal audits. He did a fleet audit in this last year. He's done review of law enforcement costs compared to other agencies. He's done a lot of audits that have been very helpful to us and has brought in additional revenue, so I think he's really added value to the organization. It is all over the place in terms of comparisons when we've done that with other cities and where it's located in the organization. It seems to be working the way he's situated now in the finance department, and that's why we've recommended that it continue to stay there. And he has been, because he's working with us and can bounce ideas off of both John and myself, it, I think it's been a very good relationship. Thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Candace, on page seventeen, slide thirty-four, the supplemental, you begin the discussion on the undesignated fund balance estimates. What I wanted to ask you about, and I apologize, I should have called Naces, but the park completion open space acquisition endowment fund, which we dip deeply into for the acquisition of Moncliff Ridge, are we still looking at partial rejuvenation of that program through undesignated annual fund balance contributions? And if so, is it a percentage? What, how are you going to identify as that undesignated annual fund balance gets smaller?
We've identified an operating transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund in both, both year of the two-year budget to the open space fund, from the general fund. And that's traditionally what happened in earlier years when we first started doing it, we were transferring a hundred thousand, so we kept that budget amount in there. Clearly, as our budget balances, I mean, our fund balances have declined, there probably, probably should be less than that, and that's calculation we can bring back to council this fall, as soon as we hear how our fund balance ended for this fiscal year ended June two thousand and seven.
Okay, because there's still, there's still significant interest in that, and I recognize that the sources of revenue are getting smaller, but there's still, from my perspective, and I think from the council's perspective, an idea, an interest in maintaining it, building it up again. The original idea was that it would grow to ten million dollars, and then the proceeds would be utilized, maintaining the corpus, establish a spending rate that kept the corpus whole and kept up with inflation. I recognize we had to utilize it for the Moncliff Open Space Acquisition, the Wildlife Corridor, but still very interested in maintaining some sort of revenue going into it to start building it again.
Well, and actually, the biggest, one of the bigger sources is from the golf course fund, as it's turning a profit now, it's been contributing two dollars per out, non-resident to that fund as well. So those are the two main sources. The other was a tax that we received, and as, like you pointed out, is billed out as decline, and we're less, houses being built, there's less money coming in from that source. But the golf course and the general fund are the two major sources at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we have a couple of, a couple of comment cards on item seven A. Dr. Jerry Langer and Ron, Ronald DeHoud. Okay, that's easier. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jerry Langer. I live in the Lang Ranch area. I'd like to speak about the appropriation of five million dollars. Number one, I'd like to say I think it's great that the city values parks and wants to support parks, and I think everybody in Lang Ranch feels the same way, excuse me. However, we would like, as some other people have already said, a park that is consistent with the master plan, with the park's definition of a community park. We certainly don't feel that the proposed park even remotely approaches that definition. And I'd like to thank Jim Gustafson, who is bringing action to clarify that issue. But my concerns right now I'd like to talk about, and I did present the, submit them to the CRPD, concerns the safety of the project. Specifically, I addressed traffic safety, which was not discussed in the EIR specifically, that the only viable, supposedly viable entrance and exit to the park for everybody except for service vehicles and the police and the fire department would be from the intersection of Rain Tree or Rainfield Avenue and Westlake Boulevard. And for those who don't know, that's on an eight percent grade and a blind curve. The EIR says we'll put a, we'll put traffic light there and everything will be fine. Easy to say, no studies, no documentation, no nothing. We know there've been some serious accidents, have been a couple of deaths along the road on the, on that slope, as well as a little bit up ahead. It's a very dangerous road at fifty miles an hour, or at any miles per hour, if there's going to be a traffic light on a blind curve, and that needs to be looked at. The city is responsible for permitting that kind of a permit to allow that to happen. I would strongly urge that the city look into it, begin to look into it seriously right now, especially with regard to liability. If there's a park there, there're going to be a lot more kids on Westlake Boulevard on their bicycles, a lot more parents, a lot more traffic. That's a problem, potentially, common sense. The other thing I wanted to talk about was that the park is going to be on the Erbs Road landslide. I'm sure that most of you have heard that. It's called in literature, the ancient landslide, the ancient Erbs Road landslide, only it's not so ancient. In nineteen ninety, approximately, when Westlake Boulevard was extended, approximately a million and three-quarter cubic yards of dirt fell. When the landslide gave way, a worker was killed. Took an extra year, year and a half, and more than a million dollars, requiring the Mellow Roos bonds to be refinanced to pay for it, to get that road up and running. The reason why it's eight percent is because it was cheaper than making it six percent, I presume. I don't know that for a fact. Nineteen ninety-two, ninety-four, approximately, there were two smaller landslides there when the signature track was being graded. When there has been grading there, there have been problems. It's not ancient, it's, last week from a geological point of view. The EIR says that, based on all available information, and that only ran up through about two thousand and one, that the landslide as it exists now is marginally stable, and that to grade or to add more water or to put more weight, which is, you know, basic geology, will lower the factor of stability. The EIR says that they will mitigate. They'll put in a buttress at the toe of the landslide, even though they don't exactly know where it is, and they admit that. They say they'll put in water pumps. They don't know how many, you know, they'll just do that. We know from what happened in Anaheim Hills, they put in a number of pumps, they all failed within three years. How much will it cost? What kind of mitigation? What is necessary? Making blanket projections based on square footage or acreage is nonsense with a placelike, the Erbs Road landslide, with our children's safety at stake, with the financial stability of the city at stake. There was a study that the city paid for, the Group Delta Report, that the EIR cited that was nine, two thousand and one. They looked, they did some borings at the area where there are going to be ball fields proposed. They said that at that point, it was marginal and that there could be no grading there.
Thank you, Dr. Lerner. Appreciate it.
Okay. Just one thought, before we go ahead, before the Parks Department, before the city goes ahead, we need to know what's going on. When the dam was built, the project went six million dollars over budget. The county's been tied up in litigation for five years. The people in Lang Ranch will be held responsible from the budget for the local flood control district. That's not right, that's not fair. There were many... There were many, many experts who went on record stating that that area was full of too much water, and it was ignored. Please don't ignore that stuff now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ron? You can pronounce your name correctly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Ryan Denhut, shortly to be changed to Smith, and resident of Thousand Oaks. I think this park over here, the idea was great perhaps 10 or 15 years ago when people started to think about it. And I'm saying that because if you look around here, you see a lot of gray hairs over here, all of that, that means the children already have gone, or they are in college, or they have terminated high school. I went to the school district and just to find out how many students are there growing, and as a matter of fact, they told me they have lost in the last two years over 1,500 students, and the trend is going downwards. So I think the idea of a regional park is just not today anymore. I mean, Thousand Oaks is getting gray, there's more single couples over here, and if you look at the thing in CLU over there, they have a lot of senior citizens housing over there. So in a sense, this park, like I said, was good 15 years ago. It does not need to be built at this size and magnitude nowadays. The other thing I want to talk about too is the fact that this park, I already reside in Brock Collection, is the only non-gated community, and there's an entrance right on Kensington to that park over there. And I can see all the vehicles over there parking in Brock Collection. There will be problems of trash and everything else. And if you look also, the fact is that it's a very busy street and people will be crossing over there, it's another danger over there. And I think that people will do that for simple fact, there's only going to be one entrance over there to park, and we all know as busy parents that it comes over there, we try to find the shortest way to get something accomplished. So I think the magnitude of the park that is envisioned right now is not correct. It should be really brought down to more like a small community park that will take care of all the people around Lang Ranch, perhaps with some walks over there, some little, you know, something, the scale, not what it is right now. It just doesn't make any sense, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
We do have one statement card on Mr. Mark Evans. This is in opposition to the Lang Ranch Park funding. All right, that concludes our speaker cards, and no more questions from council. All right, any final comments from staff before I close the public hearing? None? Okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing, and first item is the resolution. Let me ask the city attorney, can we move, we can move both recommendations, one and two? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Ms. Irwin?
I'm going to move the staff recommendations, approve the resolution adopting the annual city operating and capital improvement program budgets. And number two, approve resolution adopting annual redevelopment agency operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2007, 2008, 2008, 2009. I just want to say, I know we had a lot of comments on the park. I think it's prudent to set the money aside. It's just like with the Discovery Center, set the money aside. It's not going to be spent until we've gone through the whole process. And if anybody else has comments?
Any further comments? Ms. Builda LaPena?
Yes, as I have stated in the previous budget discussions, I have concerns and still do have concerns regarding the expenditures for the cosmetic improvements to the Civic Arts Plaza, which were total close to $6 million. Now, of course, I'm not opposed to repairing the structural damage of this building. That absolutely has to be completed, but given the fact that we have, that our general fund, as the trend shows, has dipped almost now by 50%, that to me raises a red flag and, and is an alarm bell for me, basically. And we've had since February, of course, more time, we've had more time to look at everything, and the half revisions, revisions have been made to the budget, to the proposal. I can't see spending many millions of dollars for what is considered a cosmetic improvement for the Civic Arts Plaza, such as painting the parking structure. Given the fact that there are other programs probably in more need of money, that is something that I cannot justify. And of course, comments were made tonight regarding the park, and there is no opposition to the park for Lang Ranch, per se, it's just the size of the park. $5 million is very generous, and although I did not raise any opposition a couple of weeks ago, I do think that given the fact that our general fund has dropped by almost 50%, we have to be really very careful in how we spend our money. $5 million is very generous, as I said. The other issue, of course, that was also brought up was public safety, the additional officers that will be needed and will be a very good addition, and that is to be worked out with the school district, and hopefully the city of Thousand Oaks is not going to bear the brunt of this. But until I see something that shows me that we're truly cutting back, something that shows me a recommendation of any other programs that could be cut, or anything that would help increase the general fund balance, once again, as it used to be, I have a hard time adopting this budget or approving this budget. I think the budget needs to be approved by the end of the month.
Is it not correct by July 1st?
And perhaps we can, we have another council meeting June 26th. Perhaps we can look at some of those items and find out whether money can be reduced in order to infuse our general fund with more money. It's, to me, this is not looking good at all. I don't know what the numbers will look like beyond 2009, should our sales tax not go as projected. That is as much as I have to say about this.
Okay, any further comments? Yeah, I'll just generally make some comments. You know, I've been at this for a little while, and I think this is my sixth budget, maybe seventh. The city has done a very good job over the years with respect to very conservative estimates, with respect to sales tax and all the revenues. I was commenting to Ms. Albano, is prior to Ms. Hong, we had Mr. Berry, who by all accounts was arguably the most conservative financial treasurer in the entire state of California, and well-known for that. And the city has developed a reputation of very conservative and very strong fiscal management, and this budget represents that. The budget that council's been presented isn't a document that was put together in a month or even two. I think the staff did a good job of outlining a number of study sessions, both at the council, planning commission level, but also internally. I think we don't talk a lot about what happens internally with respect to Mr. Mitnick's leadership, the city management leadership, the department heads, in making the cuts prior to this budget coming to the city council. And so, while it may not be seen as something that's really, where they've done cutting, fact of the matter is, is through our discussions with city staff, each department was looked at very, very closely, and the increases that this budget are essentially in our libraries, which we historically have funded far greater than other cities, and we have a good library system, an outstanding library system to show for it, public safety with the school resource officers, and those essentially are the positions that we're adding in. We've deleted some other positions within the budget. With respect to the capital aspect of it, very common practice, very common practice. We hear time and time again, stay a slow-growth city, stay within the general plan, and that's exactly what the city has done for 30-plus years. And the reality is, is development is essentially becoming nonexistent. We are essentially a build-out, so the permits and fees that the city has historically received over the years, they're not there anymore. And so the reality is, we still need to do the capital improvements so our infrastructure, our roads, our city facilities are maintained at the high level that the citizens expect them to be maintained at. It's really just that simple. Because of our conservative fiscal management, we have a tremendous amount of reserves, more than staff actually wants to necessarily admit to, but we are the envy of most cities in the state of California with respect to our financial soundness and viability and strength. And so, while certainly council understands and respects the comments made, the facts of the matter are, this is a very, very financially sound city. We are by no means in any financial straits, and if you look at the social programs and some of the other things that we continue to fund, it's exactly because we are so financially sound and appropriately managed that we're able to do the social service fundings, the sports endowment fundings, some of the housing, that we, all those things come from very sound fiscal management. So can't, you can't let it be stated without some response how well financially this city is positioned, and has been for, basically, in our existence. So I'm certainly going to move to approve Mr. Irwin's motion. This budget puts us in good fiscal position for the next budget cycle, very conservative, but at the same time, we're providing the type of city services and the type of increases in the areas that the folks, the residents of Tolu's are important, libraries, public safety, and infrastructure. Ms. Irwin?
I just want to make a couple of comments about the conservative nature of the finance department. I've looked at the numbers over the last, since I went through one budget cycle already, and they do always underestimate or overestimate whatever is the most conservative. I want to also say there was a, I mean, one example of how conservative the city is. There was an article about retire, pre-funding retirement health benefits, and as we talked about at the last meeting, Thousand Oaks is the first city in the state to pre-fund retirement health benefits. Those are, those are all really sound policies that the finance department has been following. Sales tax, there's absolutely no reason to think in Thousand Oaks that sales tax is not going to go up. The mall is looking great. I'm sure you've estimated very conservatively at 2%. As far as the comment about cosmetics, well, this city is all about aesthetics. We're looking at TO Boulevard beautification, we're looking at the entry signs. Those are all very important things to our residents, and making sure that City Hall looks good, I think that it is extremely important, and we are in the financial position to keep City Hall looking good. So I, I am going to, again, compliment the finance department. I think you guys did a great job, and I feel very comfortable with this budget.
All right. No further comments? Vote, please.
The motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Builda LaPena dis denying.
All right. Both items are approved. Again, I want to thank city staff for outstanding effort in the council as well. All right, we'll move to item 8. That's our city and redevelopment agency consent calendar. Any items anybody wants pulled? Ms. Builda LaPena?
This time for real. Item 8, oh, where was it now? 8W.
Okay. Anybody want to move for the balance of the consent? Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Except for item 8W, I move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right. Dr. Clancy moves for the consent calendar. We're going to hold item W as a Walter. Any further comments? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Ms. Builda LaPena on 8W.
Thank you. I thought I should pull this item because there has been a lot of talk in the community and across the state regarding eminent domain, and I thought that it would be beneficial to have staff explain just briefly what the, why this implementation of a particular state law is mandated, just for public information and dissemination.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitnick, did you want to handle that? Give you a chance to turn to that. Oh, Mr. Walter, you want to handle that? Go ahead, Russ.
Mayor Fox and members of the city council, the item before you is mandated by a state law SB 58 for those redevelopments throughout the state of California. It is a process whereby each agency has to outline its program proposed to implement or execute any eminent domain actions. Is that, is this particular law affects the city of Thousand Oaks and its redevelopment program? Both project areas that currently exist in Thousand Oaks, although they had previous authority to exercise eminent domain authority, the, that authority has expired. The way the law is written, it still requires the redevelopment agency to adopt a program, put in quotes, and the resolution, or the ordinances before the council tonight essentially says the agency has no authority to exercise its authority for eminent domain, and that's our program.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that was pretty much it, and I move to approve.
All right, thanks. Discussion? Vote, please.
Let me just read the ordinance titles. Ordinance declaring redevelopment agency has no power of eminent domain within Newberry Road redevelopment project area, and redevelopment agency has no power of eminent domain within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard redevelopment project area, and that carries 5-0.
Okay, that is approved. That's going to move us to item 9. That's a public hearing item, and will the clerk please open item 9A, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 9A regarding the landscape and lighting assessment district number 79-2, annual levy and annexation fiscal year 2007, 2008. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing, and I have no speaker cards.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Spurgeon, you're going to provide the staff report on this item?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Little technical difficulty over here, I'm afraid, but this is our annual meeting for the landscape and lighting assessment district, and this is where we set assessments for both landscape and lighting improvements and maintenance throughout the city for the coming fiscal year, as well as receive ballots for annexations to the, to the district. This particular district is also in very good financial shape. This is really a result of years of work by various staff, and our assessments are proposed to increase this year by the voter-approved inflationary factor. In this case, it's 3.2% maximum rate is being increased. There are about half of the benefit zones in the landscape district that are at the maximum assessment rate, but the other half are below. So there are a number of residents within the city that are actually being charged less than, than we could, and that's through a good, careful accounting of the actual cost for maintenance in those zones, and we're only, we're only charging what we actually need to spend to maintain those areas. The, on the lighting side, we are increasing the maximum rate to about $11 per year per household. It's not a very large amount for providing street lighting throughout the city, but we're only assessing folks at about 85% of that. There are seven projects that are proposed to be annexed, and these vary between commercial and residential. and residential projects throughout the city. We have also included in the CIP, which you currently... Or which you just approved, over $4 million over the next five years for landscape improvements throughout the city. And these... That's an exciting step that we've taken because we've been working on a capital program for landscaping, and now it's in the budget. And this is from... This will be funded through reserves from the district. Be happy to answer any questions at this time. The next step would be to have the public hearing, receive any other ballots that may be offered for the annexations at this time, and then direct staff to tally the ballots and come back later in the meeting to report the results and make recommendations for action.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Questions for Mr. Spurgeon from the council? Okay, we're going to now open the public testimony. Additionally, if the public has any remaining ballots, please present them to the city clerk. Okay, hearing none. Prior to closing the public hearing, I'll make one last call for any ballots. Once the public hearing is closed, then no ballots will be accepted. Okay. Then the public hearing is now closed. The city clerk will final... Do a final tabulation of ballots in the city clerk departments. While the ballots are being tabulated, we'll be continuing on with our agenda. And Ms. Lawrence will return with the results. All right, we'll move to item 9B. That's the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges. And the staff report will be provided by Ms. Terry Scott.
Good evening. Good evening, council. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. Wastewater account holders are notified via billing reminder notices, and letters are sent annually notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid.
Ms. Scott, could I just interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I just need to... I need to open the public hearing on this item here, so...
Oh, okay.
So everything you just said is a major violation of law, and we're going to bring Sheriff Carpenter in here and, you know...
Well, then I'll sit quiet until you're ready.
Exactly. Yeah, please, Chief Carpenter. Right. Somebody want to open the public hearing?
There you go. I apologize. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 9B regarding the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Okay, Ms. Scott, now you can legally go ahead and present your staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, council. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. Wastewater account holders are notified via billing reminder notices, and letters are sent annually notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcels for amounts that are in excess of 120 days past due, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax bills. We're available for questions, if any.
Thank you. The total amount is... According to the report, is about $34,000.
It's actually now about $27,600. As people come in and pay, that amount decreases a bit, and we won't actually be sending them to the tax collector until around July 1st. And so at that time, we'll know the exact amount.
Okay. Is that residential and commercial properties?
It's residential properties primarily.
Primarily. How many?
Gosh, let me just take a quick look.
125. Can you tell me, is that consistent with prior years? Is it going up? Is it going down? How many total properties do we have that are subject to this? And then 125, my guess is, is a relatively small number.
It's about... It's somewhat consistent. It is going up just a bit, but we generally attach somewhere in the area of $20,000 a year. And I guess, to give you an example, we... When we started the initial notifications, there was about $75,000 of outstanding delinquencies. By the time we mail and actually place the leans, there were only $47,900. And since that time, we're down to the $27,000. So we'll collect that through the property tax rolls in December and April of next year.
My assumption is that that's a... That's an indicator of the economy. Probably a realistic indicator when we hear about foreclosure increases and what have you. That would be the... At the front end, preclude the foreclosure process because the people that were caught up in that would be decreasing their ability of discretionary money to pay bills and what have you, so...
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? How about a motion? Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Does that resolution have to be read in title only?
No. Adopt the resolution. And I... Two, can I do both at the same time? Approve the list of property owners, addresses, parcel numbers, and assessment accounts to be submitted to the county tax collector as on file with the city clerk.
All right, Mr. Gillette moves. Items 1 and 2, discussion on those items. Hearing none. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Move to item 10. That's our departmental reports. Item 10A is the Ventura County Local Formation Commission, LAFCO, spheres of Influence. And Mr. Prescott's going to provide the staff report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have a PowerPoint for this particular item. The matter before the council tonight is the LAFCO Sphere of Influence update, and specifically the proposed amendment to the Simi Valley Sphere of Influence to include the Reagan Library and seven adjacent parcels. Just some background on the Sphere of Influence process. LAFCO is currently in and almost concluded, an update of all the spheres of influences of all the cities in the county, and they were required to do this by the end of the year. The hearing on our own Sphere of Influence was back in April. Sphere of Influence is a plan... It defined in state law as a plan for the probable physical boundary and service area of a local agency. It's a sort of a forecast of where the logical city limits might be. The... As I mentioned earlier, LAFCO is underway with a conference of review that started earlier this year, and hearings have been conducted for all cities. Simi Valley is the last city remaining. They were also scheduled in April and continued. The staff proposal by LAFCO for the Simi Sphere is to expand it by 228 acres on the southwestern edge of Simi Valley, including the Reagan Library and seven adjacent parcels. Six of those parcels are 10-acre lots for single-family homes. Four homes are already existing, and there are two vacant lots. And there is one vacant 68-acre parcel as well. It looks like the... I don't know if you can see the location map. It's not coming up on my screen, but I'll move along. In the LAFCO staff report, it evaluated this proposal and is recommending that the sphere be amended, primarily because Simi Valley already provides water service to the properties through an agreement, wastewater service directly. There are some police services for certain events at the library. In addition, the only access to the properties is via a presidential drive which begins within the city of Simi Valley. It's a long cul-de-sac. Also, the LAFCO staff report noted that the property is presently within the Terre Haute Valley Green Belt area. On April 18th, LAFCO was scheduled to conduct a public hearing on this matter. It was of some concern to the city of Thousand Oaks because we had not really had an opportunity to review it in any kind of detail, so we did request a continuance by LAFCO. They continued it until tomorrow. On April 24th, shortly after the LAFCO original hearing, we brought it to council with a memo evaluating the matter to some degree, indicating the areas we thought we needed to provide you more information. And a copy of that staff report is attached in the evening's packet to our staff report of tonight's date. And at that time, the council directed staff to research and return with recommendation, and also requested the city manager to meet with his counterparts in the two other cities that are adjacent to and signatories to the Terre Haute Valley Green Belt Agreement to reach a staff consensus. I'd like to give a little bit of background, too, on another very important county-wide policy that is relevant to the requested change in Sphere of Influence for Simi Valley, and that's the Guidelines for Orderly Development. Those were really a pioneering effort by the governmental entities in this county, adopted in 1969 by the Board of Supervisors, all the city councils, and LAFCO. They've been consistently used since then to define the relationship between the county and the cities with respect to urban planning and to promote efficient delivery of services. The guidelines were most recently updated in a fairly comprehensive way in 1996, and we have included in our... One of the attachments to our staff report is the actual copy of the Guidelines for Orderly Development. The general policy in the Guidelines for Orderly Development is that urban development should occur within cities, not within the unincorporated area of the county, that the cities are primarily responsible for land use planning within their spheres of influence. And again, the Sphere of Influence boundary of a given city usually is somewhat beyond its city limits at the time, so it recognizes the city's primary role in planning for that area that ultimately may become part of that city. And if property is included in a city's Sphere of Influence, it indicates at a policy level that annexation to that city is appropriate in the future. Now, an annexation requires the consent of property owners in many respects or in many instances, and therefore, just because land is in a Sphere of Influence does not mean a city can unilaterally annex it. It also means that if the county receives a development proposal for land within the city's Sphere of Influence, it will automatically refer that development proposal to the city, the idea being that at that time, the proponent could request the annexation to the city, and the city would process that development request. Another term that's in the Guidelines for Orderly Development is the term "area of interest," and those were adopted by LAFCO. And they basically divide the county into major geographic areas. The entire south half of the county is divided into areas of interest. Some of those areas of interest have cities, and some do not, Las Poses Valley being an example. They were intended to reflect the general communities within the county and planning identity. They also serve as a routing slip, if you will, for any kind of applications that are filed with the county as to which city might be interested in commenting on it. There can be no more than one city within each area of interest. It prevents the annexation wars. That's one of the primary purposes. And there won't necessarily be a city in each area of interest. Las Poses Valley is an example, one that doesn't have a city now. Moor Park did not have a city when the areas were originally adopted, but later, the city of Moor Park Incorporated. And this map shows the location of the Sphere of Influence update proposed for the city of Simi Valley with respect to the Terre Haute Green Belt and the surrounding cities. As you can see, it's in the southeast corner of the Green Belt and immediately adjacent to the city of Simi Valley. The Terre Haute Valley Green Belt was adopted by agreement among the cities of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, and Moor Park in 1984, and the purpose is to retain the valley in agricultural and open space uses. The cities basically agreed not to annex land within that Green Belt. The portion of the property that... The subject of tonight's matter, the proposed expansion of the Simi Valley Sphere of Influence, is within that city's area of interest. So they would not be... If an annexation ultimately went forward, they would not be going beyond their area of interest. But the balance of the Green Belt is in Moor Park's area of interest. At the April 24th hearing, the city council asked us to provide information and analysis back to the council on these four topics: the timing of the sphere amendment, how the integrity of the Green Belt could be preserved if it went forward, maintaining adequate protection of the land that would be included in Simi Valley Sphere of Influence, and avoiding a precedent-setting action. The timing of the Sphere Amendment, basically, LAFCO is doing this as part of a county-wide update of all the spheres. If it is approved, Simi Valley has indicated they would like to annex the property and would likely propose a future annexation. And in that the Green Belt Agreement has the non-annexation policy, and LAFCO has endorsed that agreement, LAFCO would not entertain or look favorably upon an annexation request unless the Green Belt Agreement had been amended. And one way to amend it would be to actually detach that land from the Green Belt area or to otherwise modify the agreement to allow annexation. The Green Belt Agreement, since it is among all four entities, the three cities in the county, would require each to sign off on any amendment to the Green Belt Agreement. Preserving the integrity of the Green Belt, basically, the properties in question are at the edge of the Green Belt, and they are on hillside terrain. In fact, the development on the properties is actually on the ridge line that separates the Terre Haute Valley from the Simi Valley drainage. So they're peripheral to the Green Belt itself and not in the valley itself. Seven of the eight parcels are either already developed or subdivided for development, and that was under county auspices, that six-lot individual, single-family home subdivision. The parcels seem to be more functionally related to Simi Valley than Terre Haute Valley because of the access and because of the terrain and because of the services that are provided by Simi. One of our chief concerns would be to maintain adequate continuing protection of the land, although even if it were removed from the Green Belt, it is still, in our opinion, because of its terrain, part of what should remain a buffer between the three cities. And our primary concern would be the 68... I see a typo there. It's a 68-acre parcel, which is not developed now and does not have any entitlements on it, unlike the other properties that would be brought into Simi. And that property is characterized by very steep slopes. We have worked with the Simi Valley staff to understand their general plan designations for the property because they... Those properties are all within the Simi Valley planning area. They have adopted general plan designations for the properties. And the zoning of the properties, of course, is county zoning now, and would be, if ultimately annexed to Simi Valley, would be changed to their zoning categories. But the general plan designations provide a 40-acre minimum lot size, and that's more restrictive than the county. In some parts of the Terre Haute Valley, there are other parts that are... Do have that 40-acre minimum. Simi Valley also has hillside performance standards that apply to land over... Simi Valley also has hillside performance standards that apply to land over 20% slope. They're similar to our own hillside ordinance, although the threshold is a little bit lower at 20% for the standards to apply. So we feel that the, also, the management of the Reagan Library and Simi Valley are both desirous that that 68-acre parcel be retained as open space and possibly be included within the library property itself. So our basic conclusion there is that the natural character, remaining natural character of those lands would be preserved at least as well in Simi Valley as they would be in the county. Then another factor was, we wanted to make sure that we could avoid setting a precedent for other properties, and again, as I pointed out earlier in the report, the properties are distinct topographically and by virtue of the development that's occurred and by virtue of access from the land in the Tierra Hada Valley proper, the valley areas that you pass through as you drive the 23 freeway, Tierra Hada Road. And just a reminder, I think everybody in the room's aware, that our policy, vis-à-vis the Green Belt, as the county receives from time to time proposals to subdivide properties or to rezon properties in the Green Belt, we have consistently responded to the county that it's our goal to help them and encourage them to keep the valley open and agricultural. We have opposed rezoning in a number of cases to allow lot sizes less than 20 acres. There are some parts of the valley that are presently zoned for 10-acre lots, other parts where property owners have asked for that same zoning. We've opposed them, and the county has not approved them. And also to impose inconsistent land use, as an example, being the night lighting at the driving ranges out along Tierra Hada Road near the 23. Just to speak a little bit about intergovernmental coordination, which the council asked for at their last meeting in April, the city managers of all three cities have met and discussed the matter. They all concurred that expansion of the Simi Valley sphere of influence was appropriate. The Moor Park City Council voted to support the amendment last Wednesday. Simi Valley has supported it all along because they worked with LAFCO staff on the sphere of influence update and the municipal service review that actually preceded that. And another matter I wanted to mention actually was an agenda item on April 24th, a separate item from the sphere of influence amendment, and that was a request by the county Board of Supervisors, or authorization by the county Board of Supervisors, to authorize county staff to meet with the cities to see if there was support for a Green Belt ordinance relating to the Tierra Hada Valley Green Belt. On April 24th, you okayed doing that if requested by the county. The county has not yet requested the meeting. I'm anticipating that that will be something that occurs in July. And this is a separate issue from the Simi Valley sphere of influence amendment. So our conclusion is that, based on the analysis we've done, we feel comfortable recommending the council to support the amendment to the Simi Valley sphere of influence to include the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library and seven adjacent parcels, and direct staff to communicate that to LAFCO at their hearing tomorrow morning. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Prescott, for a very detailed, thorough report. We appreciate that. Questions for Mr. Prescott? Mr. Gillette?
I think this is as much an observation as anything else, having watched the evolution of the Tierra Hada Valley. Mr. Prescott's reference to the driving range over there, it's really a sad commentary on what happened. Going northbound on the 23 freeway, when you pass Olson Road after dusk and look into the Tierra Hada Valley, and there is that illuminated driving range, lights up like a calliope, and it's unfortunate. And now, over the years, you look on every single knoll in the Tierra Hada Valley, and it has a huge home sitting on top of it. There's no such thing as ridgeline protection. My assumption is that all of those homes are probably also on septic systems. Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And now I see that there is a, one of the new formed churches is proposing a large development, another encroachment from Tierra Hada into the valley for a church and school, et cetera, et cetera. I have no idea where that's going to go, but this particular proposal, having looked at it extensively, I think the city of Simi Valley is probably in the best position to provide some level of protection, especially for the lots up on the ridgeline near the library, and hopefully curtail residential encroachment on the library. The library would be victimized like so many things. It was there first, it had, there were certain expectations that it would be, it would be buffered and not encroached on if that level of residential encroachment were to be allowed and continue. I could see demands for curtailment of certain programs and what have you that the library has, because residential encroachment would have significant impact. So I feel that the city of Simi Valley is in the best position to start a process to expand its responsibility and authority. eventual annexation, my sense is that's where it's going. I wasn't aware of the level of public safety response to the library by the Simi Valley Police Department. Of course, there's a fire station in Wood Ranch right across the street. But the practicality of having, because it's in the unincorporated area of the county, of having a free resource law enforcement vehicle, the chances of that happening are very, very slim unless one happens to be either coming from or going to the East Valley Sheriff's Station. And in an emergency, the resources of the city of Simi Valley would be the first resources taxed and be the first responders. Of course, if it was a big enough emergency, City of Thousand Oaks resources would also respond. However, that being said, I believe this is a sound idea, and it's my hope that the city of Simi Valley can move forward and strengthen its control on that area and reduce to the extent possible with development that could potentially occur up there. I'm prepared for a motion if...
Sure, why don't you move forward, Mr. Gillette?
I'll move the staff recommendation that the council wishes to communicate to local agency formation commission, city support of LAFCO's proposed amendment to Simi Valley's sphere of influence to include the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library parcel and seven adjacent parcels.
All right, Mr. Gillette moves the staff recommendation. Any discussion on that? Ms. Bill de la Pena?
I have questions for staff.
Okay, Mr. Gillette, I asked for questions earlier, so let me have Mr. Gillette.
Let me withdraw my motion for the time being.
Go ahead, Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. Mr. Prescott, you mentioned how we were trying to avoid setting a precedent. How is, on slide 15, the fact that the Green Belt agreement includes non-annexation policy, going against that, how would that not be precedent-setting?
Simi Valley would need to process and submit to the three other entities a request to amend the Green Belt. And I think what we were trying to do here in the report in terms of the precedent-setting aspect of it is to establish as clearly as we could that these properties are different than other properties in the Tierra Hada Valley. I could not think of any other properties in the valley where those same kind of characteristics would apply in terms of the terrain of the property, the access to the properties, the fact that Simi is now providing water and wastewater service. There just aren't any other properties in the valley that are like that.
Of course, it takes three votes on the county Board of Supervisors in order to strengthen any ordinance or impose any ordinance that would make development a little bit more restrictive. There is something pending, is there not, and a proposal?
Well, in my last, next to the last slide, I alluded to an action, a matter that, when we brought this to the council in April, there were really two items. This was one of them, and the second one was an item that was on the Board of Supervisor's agenda that same day from the supervisor who represents the second district, asking the county to authorize meetings with the cities surrounding the Green Belt to determine whether there was interest in a Green Belt ordinance for the Tierra Hada Valley Green Belt. And the council approved that at that time. I believe Moor Park has also approved that. I'm not sure about the status in Simi, but as I indicated, I talked to the county planning director, and they're intending to have, start that meeting in July. So that would be to determine whether or not there was any interest in a Green Belt ordinance. And it might also be a venue to talk about some of the larger land use issues in the Green Belt, and the county's ability to control development there, and possibly even, I think, the subject that council member Gillette just raised, the cornerstone church proposal, which I found out today was actually filed with the county yesterday, very significant land use issue in the Tierra Hada Valley. So I think those, that meeting will occur, and that issue is something the council's authorized us to participate in.
Do you happen to know what, we have a letter here in our supplemental packet from the city of Moor Park that the council approved it. Do you know whether it was approved unanimously?
I don't know. I think it was, but I don't know for sure.
Thank you.
I know that the original staff recommendation at Moor Park, as we indicated in our report, had been to not oppose the amendment, and the council itself changed that to support the amendment, so it even took a stronger position than their staff had recommended.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Gillette, take another one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reinstate my motion in support of the staff recommendation, to move the staff recommendation.
All right, Mr. Gillette moves. Any discussion on that? Okay, vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. I'd like to take the council back to item 9A. That's our lighting and landscape assessment. We have the results of the balloting, and let me turn to Ms. Lawrence to provide the results of the tabulation. Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you. The ballots cast are in favor of the district as follows: yes, in the amount of $709.69, and no, in the amount of $166.98. So if the council approves the recommendations, she'll want to adopt the first resolution.
With that, a motion is in order for recommendation and option number four. That's on page 30 of the council packet and the associated resolution. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the attached resolution declaring results of property owner protest ballot proceeding for proposed levy of assessments and annexation of territory to the Thousand Oaks Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, number 79-2, fiscal year 2007-2008, and the associated resolution.
Okay, Dr. Clancy moves with his best impersonation of Dennis Gillette impersonating Barry White. Not bad. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, vote, please.
I did want to clarify, you're also wanting to adopt number five and number six in the recommendation.
All right, thanks, Ms. Lawrence. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We're going to move to our second departmental report, item 10B, that's the storm drain master plan. And who are going to provide this report?
I'll start it off.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, members of the city council. The next item before you is the storm drain system master plan. I'd also like to introduce Mohammed Fatimi, Engineering Division Manager. Mr. Fatimi has been to city council before, and on his right is Mr. Jim Taylor, who's a senior civil engineer and who is a familiar face at Planning Commission, but that is, this is his first trip to the city council. So it's a pleasure to introduce him here. Mr. Taylor is a graduate from the city of Ventura, like many of the other employees here seem to be, and he comes from a long line of hydrologists. His mother was the hydrologist for the county for a long, long period of time, so we're happy to have him on staff. It seems like about every year, year and a half or so, we end up coming back to the city council with a master plan, kind of somewhat in order. We completed the wastewater master plan, and then a water master plan, and then the streets and pavement management program. And the next one that was in line was the storm drainage master plan. Most of these have been done really at the conclusion of the, as we talk about a lot, the development of the city. It's our chance to look at everything that's been done, do one final deficiency analysis, recognize what's there, and put together a plan to address any of those deficiencies. This plan really focuses on the quantity side of storm drainage, and so what we're really looking at is the hydrology and its conveying of water. Another important issue that council's been hearing about and will continue to hear about is the quality side, which is our NPDES, the stormwater quality permits. But we won't be addressing that tonight. That's really a different issue. The quality aspects will be addressed in different ways as we go through these permit negotiations, but the presentation by Mr. Taylor tonight will really focus on the hydrology and the quantity aspects. So with that, I'll let him run through what was done.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor. We want to thank the city of Ventura for providing a very good minor league system for people to move into the varsity level here in Thousand Oaks, so welcome.
Very cool. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mark, for that great introduction. Wow. So as Mark indicated, I'm going to be presenting tonight the master plan of drainage and the GIS atlas of our storm drainage system. I'm very excited about this product. It's very modern, very updated, and I guess the first question that you might be asking is, why did we do it? The earlier atlas that we had before was on a hard copy map. It was on a very small scale and very difficult to read, and was mostly incomplete, excuse me. Also, the hydrology that we have in our current master plan of drainage was dated in 1992, and a lot of development has occurred, especially in the Dos Vientos Ranch area since that time, and so it was important for us to get an updated hydrology and start looking at our ultimate build-out scenario, which we are quickly entering. The first portion of the project was the GIS atlas itself. We had a consultant who came in and derived a comprehensive atlas by accessing all of our drainage plans and plotting them in the GIS model. That's a computerized model. The attributes such as pipe diameter, slope, material, and data construction were also added to each of the segments within the model. The end result was about 35,000 features in the storm drain atlas, over 300 miles of drainage facilities. About 65 miles of those are primary and main channels that are typically under the jurisdiction of the County Flood Control District or Lawship Protection District, as it's now known. I don't know how much of this you can see on your view, but the atlas itself, if you can't make it out, the atlas flags out each segment's size, material, length, slope, and the drawing number associated with its construction. The hydrology consultant then took the GIS information and analyzed the existing information in our current hydrology master plan, as well as fixing some errors in that master plan due to new or corrected drainage patterns, and then developed the ultimate land use, hydrology, and applied flows to the GIS atlas storm drain geometry. Each of these little puzzle pieces that you see here, I don't know if you can make those out, are actually bounded by high points, and they divvy up the city into small sub-areas of drainage area. And for each of those sub-areas, there's a close-up. You can see that we can see the CFS per acre or the, some of the technical data for each of the sub-areas, as well as the flow line, the direction of flow through each of the areas within the city. Then came the deficiency establishment portion. In evaluating our deficiencies, we looked at several criteria, including the age and life cycle of the drainage pipes, their carrying capacity, and some known areas that have been identified by our municipal service staff as being deficient. It's important to note that we didn't just do this in a lab, you know, by analysis, but we actually took into consideration the views of our maintenance people. So what was cool about this portion is that the analysis was able to just take the hydrology and apply it directly and electronically to the system and determine all of the technical deficiencies within the drainage system. The end result was that approximately 100 segments that are highlighted here, and there's a close-up, are deficient. You note that the yellow... You note that the, uh, yellow segments are metal pipes that were installed before nineteen seventy. Those are also known to be a problem. Uh, the orange segments are concrete pipes that were installed before nineteen sixty-six and therefore were questioning about their reinforcement. Uh, the number with the star in the lower right corner is a maintenance problem area, one of fifty-five that was identified by our, uh, maintenance staff. Uh, the dashed black and red pipes that are seen here are the ones that are of significant deficient status. So what we get is a final product. Well, we ended up with a couple of published beautiful color volumes, uh, and also everything that, uh, we have is available on the, uh, intranet here within City Hall. Uh, we've taken that step, but we need your blessing on the final product before we can go, uh, out to the public with that information. We also benefit from this master plan because, uh, we now have a means to analyze the storm rain system when we have significant land use changes. As we see, uh, intensification of uses within certain sub-areas, larger single families are becoming, uh, more intensified condominium and apartment uses and so forth, uh, we should be able to anticipate drainage infrastructure needs, uh, before they happen. Also, as our city's maintenance period, uh, starts to come upon us as opposed to the expansion and development section, uh, we're seeing more, uh, infill and, uh, other impacts such as traffic and stormwater pollution. Uh, for those of you that have been following the stormwater permit, the current draft before us from December, uh, with the regional board, uh, there is a hydro modification issue at hand. And the hydro modification issue can very readily be addressed through use of the GIS and the hydrology master plan that we have. It's all really good stuff. Here's a, here's a view of our internal, uh, GIS. This is how the, uh, staff can currently view it. Uh, you can see a little yellow box there. That's a flag that tells, uh, the, the key informational area, uh, information that I mentioned before. So what's next? Well, for the short term, we took some of the more, uh, obvious drainage deficiencies due to maintenance staff reports and addressed those, put them into the current CIP so that we could get something into the budget. Uh, for the long term, we would like to seek out, um, the phase two portion of this project, which will, uh, develop a full ten to fifteen-year CIP and actually weigh out, uh, the actual needs and, and assess a priority system so that we can actually put these in order and, and successfully allocate our limited available funds. Another thing that will also be considered is available funding mechanisms such as grants. Now, here's where we go crazy. We're going to try to run a two-minute clip here that was derived from the product. It's, uh, pretty cool if I can get it to work here. Alt-tab. Let it go. And this will give you kind of an aerial overview of, of the city, starting from out in outer space. This was done using, uh, the Google Earth and I'll move the arrow out of the way so you can see it. Uh, basically, we're swooping in here to City Hall and you can see the blue ridge lines of the sub-areas that have been superimposed on the topography. Swing around to Lake Sherwood. And then the red lines, of course, are the flow lines. There's the Lake, uh, Westlake Lake. We'll swing up around to the headworks of the Lang Creek watershed and then swing down into where the Lang Creek Dam is located. Then pivot back around to Bard Reservoir and the Simi area in North Ranch. And the Reagan Library. Sorry, that was Wood Ranch, wasn't it? And the Cal Lutheran University campus. Up and over to the Mount Clough area. We're all very familiar with that area. Swing over into the Amgen Territory and the Chappelle Developments in the Rancho Caneo area. Swing back around again to the Canyon Above Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. And then take a good look at that treatment plant there. Up and around into Dos Vientos, we can see Caneo Mountain Creek, the, uh, headworks of a larger portion of the Dos Vientos Ranch area. And, uh, some of the sub-areas there. Again, you can see all the ridge lines have been superimposed on the topography. And then a few of the detention basins that were required to mitigate the hydrology changes up in the, uh, Dos Vientos Ranch area. Back around to Borchard Drive or Borchard Road Interchange and the, uh, Moretti and Property. Swing on over to the Oaks Mall, one of my favorite projects these days. And, um, then over to the Golf Course and then on back to City Hall. I thought that was a really excellent way of showing you how the super, how we can superimpose the master plan on any portion of the city and actually do some interactive analysis of it. So with that, let's see if I can get back to the presentation here. Um, alt-tab. Almost, I have the conclusion slide. Sorry. All right, well, at any rate, that's where we were. And so we move for the, uh, recommendation. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Taylor. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
What of any impact will this have on one of the, perhaps the biggest drainage issue problem that we have, which is Kevin Street? Does it have anything to do with it at all? Nothing at all? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Irwin?
Actually, I just wanted to say that was really neat to see all, all of the stormwater like that. And then I, I did have a question. I assume these, you said the, the metal pipes are the oldest ones and you're already in the, you've been in the process all along of replacing those, but this is just giving you everything, uh, together to come up with a ten to fifteen-year capital improvement budget?
Yeah, there's, there was the, the previous hydrology study that was done and we had a separate corrugated metal pipe study that was done at one point too. So this kind of brings everything, puts it all in one place so that you're prioritizing all the different projects against each other.
And is, is this, um, is the software accessible now to the public? Would they be able to take a look at all this?
Actually, it would be after, uh, after the approval tonight, uh, after your recommendation and the adaptation of the, uh, the project, then we can make it public, available to the public.
All right. Thank you. That was very interesting.
Any other questions? Dr. Clancy?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to remark that it's really refreshing to see so much of city staff that are totally enchanted with their work. So, uh, it's a pleasure, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
All right. We have no comment cards. It's a pleasure of the council on this. Ms. Irwin?
I will move the recommendation to approve and accept the two thousand seven storm drain master plan.
All right. Discussion on the motion? Vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Items eleven and twelve, we have no reports. Item thirteen is council issues and recommendations. Thirteen A is report on meetings and conferences attended by council members. Thirteen A one is the National League of Cities, uh, ITC, uh, Committee. And, uh, Dr. Clancy is going to give us the report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Atlanta for this meeting, uh, of Information Technology and Communications. There were three study topics. Um, the primary study topic, the real emphasis of the meeting, was recommending that there be established a national broadband, uh, internet access strategy. Uh, the U.S. has dropped to a position of about sixteenth within the world with nations such as Korea, Japan and France ahead of us. Um, also developing information, uh, technology plan, which was done. Uh, the election technology issue was summarily dropped. Someone wanted us to study, uh, voting machines and, and there was unfunded type of thing. Um, legislative update, the only interesting thing I thought was that the FCC continues to, uh, get into video franchising and has, uh, declared that local franchising processes are, are unreasonable barriers. It was a great meeting and, uh, most enjoyable.
All right.
I recommend, uh, you receive the report.
All right, thank you. That'll be the order. Uh, thirteen two is the League of Cities Public Safety Policy Committee and that's Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you have in your packet, page one ninety-three, a brief report on, uh, uh, League of California Cities, uh, Public Safety Committee. I've been appointed to the, um, Homeland Security Subcommittee to work with Tony Ferraro, who's a retired, uh, police captain from Arroyo Grande and also worked with California Specialized Training Institute, developing criteria for this, uh, for discussion topics and items of interest, uh, in California. Moving now, especially with the, uh, the state's intention to consolidate the Office of Emergency Services, OES, and Homeland Security into one organization, uh, to reduce driving time. I, I went to Solvang to meet with, uh, Mr. Ferraro. We, uh, Dave Mullany's from the League of California Cities was also with us and we've got some ideas down on paper and those are now being finalized and will be presented, uh, the end of the month to the, uh, Public Safety Committee. Um, also, uh, I was asked and I'm working on it with our legislative, uh, analyst to, uh, identify an, uh, an individual with specific expertise on the, uh, Program for Transportation of Hazardous Material to Yucca Mountain. And, uh, the potential for interest as, uh, those types of materials may be transported through our jurisdiction and through, uh, different areas of California. So those are the items. That was the meeting and, uh, more detail, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's in the report, as I said, on page one ninety-three. Motion would be to receive and file.
Okay. No objection. That'll be the order. Thank you, Mr. Gillette and Dr. Clancy for, uh, your participation in both those committees. Uh, item fourteen is the city manager's report. Mr. Mitnick?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up from a request from the public tonight, one item, uh, that's the Village Homes, uh, issue in, uh, Westlake Hills. Staff will gladly follow up on that and, uh, provide information to, to council, uh, later. By way of announcements, upcoming, uh, issues, um, kind of exciting thing, tomorrow night in the, at the library, at the Grant Brimhall Library, chance to meet a local author who, um, Rip Rents. He wrote, he grew up in Thousand Oaks and wrote a book entitled The Oaks. And he'll be talking about tomorrow night, Wednesday, June thirteenth, seven P.M. in the Central Library. You can go on the city's website to get more information. The next, uh, city council meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-sixth. Items of, of interest include the annual presentation from the Alliance for the Arts of its, um, check to the city and this year's check will be a larger dollar amount at the conclusion of the three years of negotiations with him. So the city's, uh, really excited about that. Uh, there'll be a, one public hearing that we know of at this point and that has to deal with the use of the city flag and the city seal. And the, uh, department reports include the Alliance for the Arts, uh, funding issues agreement that is being proposed, uh, as well as, uh, office space lease agreement with the Alliance. Staff will also be presenting, uh, a recommendation to continue for two more years the community prosecution program with the Ventura County District Attorney's Office. Also, uh, for council's, um, information, staff from the city, school district and park district have been working very cooperatively and we're hopeful to have an internal government relations committee meeting on June twenty-fifth, which is a Monday. And then June twenty-sixth, Saturday is a council meeting. Police Chief Dennis Carpenter, who are representative, will attend the school board meeting along with the high school principal from Camarillo to give an overview of the school resource officer program and the, the dare conversion and so on. And I think the mayor may want to say something about the dress code for the next council meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, we're moving into the summer months, so we'll send a memo out, but if there's no objection, we'll move to our, uh, our Hawaiian shirt dress for the summer months, uh, through the month of September, basically. So if there's no objection, that'll, that'll be the dress code. Are you done, Mr. Mitnick?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. This meeting on the twenty-fifth, where and when? As I'm a member of that committee, I'd like to find out.
Yeah, as I mentioned, we're in the process of scheduling that. We, we're, we're hopeful that we'll have the June twenty-fifth. We've been struggling scheduling this meeting for a few weeks. If we can't, if it doesn't work out, then we'll reschedule another date. But that's the very latest for the council and public's information.
All right. Uh, moves us to item fifteen. We do have a closed session tonight. There'll be no announcement after the closed session, so I'll ask Ms. Albano to announce our closed session item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. Conference, the council will be going into closed session for conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Yoakam versus the city of Thousand Oaks pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point nine subsection A. And as the mayor stated, there will be no announcement at the end of the session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. And, uh, that takes us to our adjournment tonight. We're going to adjourn tonight's council meeting, uh, to our regularly scheduled meeting on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. Want to wish everybody a good night. We're adjourned.